Good, good evening, everyone. We will now call to order the Maryville Town Council meeting to today, Tuesday, May ninth, at six thirty P M.
So, welcome, everyone. Welcome to Municipal Day. It's a great day. We're letting the MIS students fill in for the council members and every department head in town. And it's gonna be a wonderful evening. I appreciate your indulgence, but have fun tonight, and let's let the students do our work for us.
My name is Sanaya Fisher from MIS. I'll be filling in tonight as council president. Tonight is Municipal Night, where students will get to experience Town of Maryville, the Town of Maryville's officials serving as the Town Council, Town Judge, Town Clerk, Treasurer, and all the department leaders of the town. We want to thank Ms. Bonin for this wonderful idea, allowing this, allowing us this great experience. Please, please stand for invocation, and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
Please, let's pray. Heavenly Father, Heavenly Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we humbly come before you this evening as one to give you honor and praise. Father, we ask for your presence to be with us tonight, to thank you for all that are here. We pray for guidance, wisdom, and clear minds for our politicians to have love, patience, and care for the community we live in, and love for the laws, present and future, that will help us all, old and young. Father God, we pray for our law enforcement officers to serve us for the compassion and love they have for us. May they start their watch well-rested and open-minded to all they meet. May they return home to their family when they are done. We thank their families, may you, we thank their families, may you give them peace of mind while they patrol our community. Father God, we pray for the fire department as they help to save people and homes. Angels of protection surround them. Father God, we pray for the electricians who go out to restore and keep the power going in such dangerous conditions of a storm. Father God, we thank you and pray for our churches for not only teaching, but for all they do year-round for the community. Father God, we thank you and pray for our schools and teachers. We pray for all the students to go strong and continue in the footsteps of all we prayed for here tonight. We thank you and pray in the holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Remain standing for a moment of silence. We will, we will now do the pledge of allegiance. Is there a veteran in the audience tonight?
Sir, will you lead us in the pledge tonight, please?
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We will now have the Clerk Treasurer call the roll for attendance of Town Council members and Student Council members.
My name is Evelyn Hughes, and I am the stand-in for the Clerk Treasurer today. Ward one, Mr. Span and Daria Martin.
Here.
Ward two. Ward two, Vice President Hardaway and Leland Ray.
Here.
Ward three, Mr. Minchuck and Christopher Bland.
Here.
Ward four, Ms. Uzalik and Royce Edwards.
Here.
Ward six, Mr. Pettit and Isis Selby.
Here.
Here.
Ward seven, Mr. White and William Tonslin.
Here.
Ward five, President Bella and Sanaya Fisher.
Here.
Six present.
I'll now read the essay I submitted to select to serve in this important position tonight. Maryville is a magnificent town that has marvelous, marvelous people within the community. I have lived in Maryville for two years, and I love it here. There are so many amazing things in so, in, in Maryville, but there are some things I have noticed that could make Maryville superior to other towns in Indiana if we fix them. I think there are so many ways that we can make our town a little better, such as picking up trash, making more parks, and making more opportunities for swimming. First, there's, there is so much trash on the ground, and that can be bad for the environment. This type of debris can harm habitats, animals, and humans. Also, it can pollute the air, making it hard for animals and humans to live in Maryville. Also, dirty environments can cause heart disease and different types of cancer. To help with this problem, we can encourage people to pick up trash and stop throwing trash on the, on the ground. We can start a trash pickup community day, which can help solve the problem of too much litter in Maryville. Second, when I look for a place to go play, I only see one park, which is kind of sad because it's kind of hidden. There needs to be more parks in Maryville for kids of all ages. The parks need to be more accessible to disabled kids. The only park is kind of in the woods where little kids can wander off and get kidnapped. Other things, another thing we need to do is update the park at, at Maryville Intermediate School by ending slides, swings, basketball courts, and making the track better to run on. The goal of adding, adding these things is that all, all of the other schools have one of these things, but Maryville Intermediate has school, has, has a broken park, and we have, we only have tennis courts that we don't even use. Finally, when I look around Maryville, I do not see any public pools. During the summertime, there is nowhere to go when you want to go to the pool, but the closest one is in Hobart. In addition, the kids' parents are still working. The kids, the kids wants, still want to go to the pool, but they can't because they have to walk so far to get there. There should be at least one public pool in Maryville, so kids can still go whenever they want, whenever they want, and don't have to wait for the weekends. Kids should, should have, should have to be able to have some fun at the pool and don't have to worry about their parents. Some kids have, have their grandparent, grandparents that can take them to the pool, but the grandparents don't want to drive and want to be, want to walk there without any problems. These improvements could affect our lives he, here in Maryville in a very positive way, by having a clean town and not having to, not, and not having to worry about so much trash. Wouldn't need, we wouldn't need to worry about kids getting kidnapped and having more places to go during the summer. When the kids of Maryville Intermediate go out to play, they can have fun in addition to having a better track that's, that makes it even easier for people who want to run when they go outside. These things are just some of the solutions to some of the problems. Like the saying goes, a little goes a long way. Sorry, will you read this? Petitions, communications, acknowledging, and re- re-
Right, isn't that a tough word?
Remo, remostresses, mirrostresses. Arbor Day, um, proclamation. Matt, Matt Lake and Gabby Moros.
Town of Maryville Proclamation, State of Indiana, Arbor Day twenty twenty-three. In eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Architecture that a special day could be set aside for the planting of trees, and this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of million trees in Nebraska. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and worldwide. Trees can reduce and iver- erosion and precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life, life-giving oxygen, and provide hab- habitat for wildlife. Trees are renewable resources giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel in our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our town increase property valuables, valuables, and enchant, and enhance the economic vitality of businesses, areas, and beauty, beauty of our community. Trees wherever they are planted, and a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville that, that Tuesday, May ninth twenty twenty-three be designed as Arbor Day in the Town of Maryville, Indiana, and call upon the citizens of Maryville to dedicate this day to the importance of health, safety, and environmental issues affecting our community and the children who reside with all of us.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval.
Roll call vote.
Ward one, Mr. Span and Daria Martin.
Yes.
Ward two, Vice President Hardaway and Leland Ray.
Yes.
Christopher Bland, ward three.
Yes.
Ward four, Royce Edwards.
Yes.
Ward six, Isis Selby.
Yes.
Ward seven, and Williams Tonslin.
Yes.
Ward five, Sanaya Fisher.
Yes.
And council members, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Swearing in, in of the Student Council Judge and Natalie Cock.
What do you want on that? Correct? Where are you gonna do it?
We can do it, we're gonna let her read her first, and then we can come around and if you want, they can stand behind, watch the voice in there.
Okay, that'd be good.
Okay. So you can stand here, do your part, introduce yourself first.
My name My name is Natalie Cox Kemp, and I am the Maryville Town Judge. I hear and decide case involving traffic matters, town ordinance, and small crimes, criminal cases. I also can for, from time to time swear in police officers as well as, as well as any official member of a board. I also have the au- authority to marrying people. Depending on the specific case, I can sentence people for up to a year in jail or ninety days for contempt of court.
Student Council members, would you please stand and raise your right hand?
Aye. State your name. Speak your name.
Christopher Bland.
Evelyn Hughes.
Do solemnly
She's gonna have you repeat after her, okay? So we'll start over. We'll start with aye.
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 State your name.
Christopher Bland.
Jackson Cowherd.
Royce Edward.
Do solemnly
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
Swear or affirm
Swear or affirm.
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution
The Constitution
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and honestly
And I will faithfully, impartially, and honestly.
Discharge my duties as
Discharge my duties as
Councilperson
Councilperson.
For the town of, a councilperson, for the town of Maryville, Indiana.
For the town of Maryville, Indiana.
According to law
According to law.
And the best of my skill and ability.
And the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Consent agenda. Account, accounts payable register vouch approval for May ninth to, to thousand and twenty-two.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye, students and council.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, approval of Town Council meeting minutes of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries. Standing and, and Special Committee reports, budget finance, budget finances, Chairman Mr., Mr. Hardaway and Leland Ray.
The Budget and Finance Committee will start meetings with department heads during the first week of June to review current spending and look at needs for the second half of the year. We would also like to remind residents, residents and small business owners to apply for our A R P assistance program for any extra exterior improvements. This, this concludes my report.
Council Affairs, Chairman, Chairman and Mr. Pettit and Isis Shelby.
No report.
Street depart, Street Department Chairman, Mr. Minchuck and Christopher Bland.
The Street Department recently changed its name from Maryville Public Works to Maryville Street Department. The men and women of the Street Department work the year-round, making sure our streets are safe and that our town looks clean. Bridge pickup is currently in the Turkey Creek area and moving south. The Street Department continues to put in hard work, even after the extra effort after the tornado cleanup. We thank them for all their hard work. This concludes my report.
Elections and pub, public relations, town beautification, Chairman, Mr. Pettit and Isis Shelby.
I'm gonna schedule a meeting for next week.
We're gonna schedule a meeting for next week, Mr. President, Madam President.
Environmental Affairs, Chairman, Mr. White and William Tom, Tonsils.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The number of COVID cases has went down eleven percent, and there have been no COVID deaths. Thank you. That is the end of my report.
Personnel, policies, and employee benefits, Chairman, Mr. Hardaway and Leland Ray.
Um, we defer back to Human Resources.
To the H R department.
To, to the H R department.
We will defer this to the H R department, our report. Thank you, Mr. President, Madam President.
Next one. Public Safety, Chairman, Ms., Mr. Minchuck and Christopher Bland.
The Public Safety Committee con, includes the Maryville Police Department and the Maryville Fire Department. The Police Department has sixty-one sworn officers to provide safety for our town. These officers work around the clock in endangered situations so we can sleep safely. Children from all over Maryville need to know that these police officers are their friends and someone they can turn to for help. The Fire Department also works very hard around the clock in endangered situations. They save people from danger as well as the houses we live in. Firefighters are also our friends to all children and safe person to go to when in danger. This concludes my report.
Econ, Economic Development, Chairman, Mr. Petit, Pettip, and Isis Shelby.
No report.
Parks and Recreation Chairwoman, Mrs. Uzalik and Royce Edwards.
Parks Department maintains staff, collab with planning and building staff to develop a sco, scope of work for renovates, for at Forest Hills, Rosenbaum, and Prusen, and Prusen Parks. Total cost is not to extend eighty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, and work will begin as soon as possible. Forest Hills' scope of work. One, repair and paint existing grail across bridge. Two, paint bridge support beams under bridge. Three, five, five-by-five concrete, concrete affro tramps to bridge. Rosenbaum Park's scope of work. One, remove shingle roof and replace with steel roof. Two, aluminum, soffit, and fascia. Three, steel sliding on gable ends. Four, steel trusses on underside of roof. Five, repair to shelter as needed. Six, thirty-by-twenty-two concrete slab under shelter. Seven, nineteen-by-three sidewalk from play area to shelter option. Eight, ceiling liner inside shelter option. Prusen, Prusen Park's scope of work. One, seal slash saint, sainting gavizo. Two, repairs at gavizo. Three, new sixteen-by-twelve shelter post fill, fill, shelter posts framed steel. Four, eighteen-by-fourteen concrete slab under shelter. Five, four-by-four landing at west end of gavizo. Six, eleven-by-three sidewalk from play area to shelter. That is the end of my report.
I make the motion that we do the reconstruction of all three, all three of these parks, and it was just read what we're going to do.
Second.
Any comment?
I have one comment before we vote, that this kind of addresses some of your concerns you read in your, in your letter, so that's good news. Lawrence, could you please, for the record, list the amount, the dollar amount?
Oh goodness, I forgot that was.
I believe it's not to exceed eighty-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay. Oh, I see it now. It, total cost is not to exceed eighty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, and work will begin as soon as possible. And I've made the motion already.
Second stance.
Roll call vote.
Ward one, Mr. Span and Daria Martin.
Yes.
Ward two, Leland Ray.
Yes.
Ward three, Mr. Minchuck and Christopher Bland.
Yes.
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes, sorry.
Ward four, Ms. Uzalik and Royce Edwards.
Yes.
Ward six, Mr. Pettit and Isis Selby.
Yes.
Yes.
Ward seven, Mr. White and William Tonslin.
Yes.
Ward five, President Bella and Sanaya Fisher.
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Abandoned Blight's properties. Chairman, Mr. Hardaway and Leland, and Leland Ray.
Afford to the Court of Code Enforcement.
Dean, Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Chairman, Ms., Mr. Pettit and Isis Shelby.
The Boys and Girls Club of Greater Northwest Indiana, Inc. proposes to build a club in Maryville on land owned by the town. The property is selfless of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. The club would be modeled after the new Valparaiso Club. The committee received a purchase agreement from the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Northwest Indiana, Inc. for real property on the sixty-six eighty Broadway. The proposed purchase price at the approximate three-acre site is eighty-six thousand six hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents. After discussions with the Parks and Recreation Fire and Street Departments and Town Authority, the committee recommends that the town accept the offer and agree to sell the land. Additionally, the committee received an ingress egress parking easement agreement from the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Northwest Indiana, Inc. requesting an easement through the self-parking lot of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. The easement would allow vehicles and pedestrians access to sixty-six eighty Broadway. After conversations with the Building and Planning and Parks and Recreation Departments and discussion with the Town Authority, the committee recommends that the town grant the easement.
Motion to approve, Mr. President, for discussion. Second.
Second.
Open for discussion.
Madam President, Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to introduce Matt Galeros, Mike Justin, and Renee Martin from the Northwest Indiana Boys and Girls Club. Matt, do you want to come up and say a few words? This has been a long time coming for the folks in the audience. Another commitment by this Town Council to take care of the kids in the town. Uh, Matt and his staff, uh, as many of you know, are currently housed at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center with an after-school program, um, that he helped coordinate. Uh, I can't thank Matt enough, his attorney, Dave Hollenbeck. Uh, I can't thank Matt enough, his attorney Dave Hollenbeck, our town attorney Joe Svetinoff, uh, for putting all this together. Um, Matt, I can't wait to see what you guys are gonna build out there.
Thank you very much. So, uh, first I'd like to take a brief moment and introduce Mike Jesson, who's the new CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. And when I say new, we're talking like eight days into the job, so very, very new. And then Renee Martin is with us tonight as well. She'll be the incoming board chair starting in twenty twenty-four. Um, Councilman Pettit's right, this has been a few years in the making and, uh, we're excited to be here tonight. And I, I, we just got back from a national conference last week for Boys and Girls Club and the statement is, let's hope I get it right, today's kids are tomorrow's leaders. And I think you're looking at them all right here, right? I mean, like, if, there's no greater testament to, to that statement. Um, there's been a lot of work that we plan on doing from a due diligence process, from working with the school district as well to make sure we can try to get the kids to the, the clubs. And we do want to build a, a great state-of-the-art, uh, facility. And, and we couldn't do it without the partnership of the town. Um, without that, th- this would not, uh, even be a possibility for us to try to consider to get done. Um, so we can't thank you enough. We hope everything passes, uh, easily. Um, and more than anything, we're here to, to serve the kids because that statement, today's kids are tomorrow's leaders, is what we believe and what we are here to do. So, thank you very much, Council.
Madam President, Mr. President, additionally, as an FYI to the audience and, and to the press that's here, uh, remember that through the Redevelopment Commission, uh, the Town of Maryville is committing a total of two million dollars toward the actual construction. We will do a ten-year lease with Boys and Girls Club with two hundred thousand dollars a year coming out of the Broadway TIF toward the capital, uh, campaign that Matt and his board, uh, will be directing. So, it's not only the land, but we're putting money in for the brick and mortar on this club. Again, Madam President, you identified some things in your letter. Another thing that this council is committed to doing. And, uh, I'm very proud of my colleagues on the Redevelopment Commission.
Who are they?
Who are they, Madam Uz- Mrs. Uzalak? It's Mrs. Uzalak, Mr. Hardaway, Mr. Minchuck, and Mr. White, uh, and myself make up the Redevelopment Commission. And we are in charge of the TIF districts in town.
Mr. Svetinoff, do you need any clarity on the motion? Do you want the purchase agreement first?
Do you want the purchase agreement first?
Is there any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ward one, Mr. Span and Deliah Martin.
Yes.
Ward two, Vice President Hardaway and Lilon Ray.
Yes.
Ward three, Mr. Munchuck and Christopher Bland.
Yes.
Ward four, Ms. Uzalak and Royce Edwards.
Yes.
Ward six, Mr. Piet and Pettit and Isis Shelby.
Yes.
Yes.
Ward seven, Mr. White and William Tomson.
Yes.
Ward five, President Bella and Sanaya Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Six.
Thank you. Mr. Pettit, do you have, do you have another, uh, motion for?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, let's, uh, make a motion to approve the Ingress Egress Parking Easement Agreement drafted by Mr. Svetinoff.
Is that a motion, sir?
That's a motion, yes.
Open for discussion.
Pettit, would you explain what we're doing and why?
Uh, I would defer to, uh, legal counsel.
Legal counsel, sir? Why are they doing this tonight?
At this time, I'll speak for everybody. Just, uh, the Ingress Egress Agreement that's before the council tonight is just to guarantee the amount of parking spaces that the Boys and Girls Club are gonna retain at the community center over, over the, um, at, at the purchase of this, uh, at the purchase of this land. So they're gonna be dedicated so many spaces, it's signified on the, on the map itself, statute of limited aid. We just want to clarify that so there'd be no confusion later on as to what the Boys and Girls Club has versus what the town has in terms of parking at the community center.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Ward one, Mr. Span and Deliah Martin.
Yes.
Ward two, Mr. Vice President Hardaway and Lilon Ray.
Yes.
Ward three, Mr. Minchuck and Christopher Bland.
Yes.
Ward four, Mr. U- Mrs. Uzalak and Royce Edwards.
Yes.
Ward six, Mr. Pettit and Isis Shelby.
Yes.
Ward seven, Mr. White and William Tomson.
Yes.
Ward five, President Bella and Sanaya Fisher.
Yes.
Six.
I vote aye. Six ayes, a motion carries.
Special Projects FNB Tax Diversity Fourth of July Celebration. Chairman, Mr. Hardaway and Lilon Ray.
The June Tea Celebration will be on June seventeenth at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center from twelve noon until five P.M. There would be something for all Asians, including music, dance team, and bouncy houses for the kids. For more information, please contact Ms. Sheila Shine, Director of the Building and Planning Department. Fourth, Fourth of July fireworks will be on June third, starting at nine P.M. And the Fourth of July Parade will kick off from, from, at eleven A.M. From the community center. Parade applications are available at the Town Administration Office at the Community Center. National Night Out will be held on Tuesday, August first, from five P.M. until eight P.M. At the Community Center. More details to come. This concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
One quick thing to add.
One quick thing to add is that the fireworks will take place at the high school parking lot as it did last year. Thank you.
Lake County Sol- Solid Waste Management, Mr. White and William Tomson.
There is twenty twenty-three household hazardous waste collection schedule posted on the website at L C S W M D dot com. The next collection will be at Holbert Public Works on May twentieth from nine A.M. to two P.M. Compost is also available for purchase by businesses or other organizations with a valid tax exempt number.
Madam President. Yes, Madam President. Additionally, I would like to add to the report that the, uh, Lake County Solid Waste District is ready to release two point one million dollars in recycling grant to all nineteen communities in Lake County. Uh, that ends our report.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway and Lilon Ray.
No report. Stormwater Management Resource, Resources Director, Director Ma- Matt Lake and Gabby Murrows.
Construction was successfully complete for our drainage improvement project on Ninety-third and Randolph Street. We are celebrating Arbor Day today because trees are important for the quality of life and is also part of our Trees City USA program. We have started construction for tannic ditch replacement of all ditch crossings from seventy-ninth place to seventy-third place in the Lincoln Garden subdivision. Our stormwater board approved engineering for our Country Club subdivision at Independence Hill Third Edition subdivision. Finally, we have achieved bronze level status as an IDM clean community. That concludes, that concludes my report. Thank you.
South Shore Visitors and, and Convention Authority, Mr. Redon.
Visit our website at W W W dot Southshore dot com to learn about the many things to do, events, restaurants, places to stay, and support sports in Link County. That concludes my report.
Fire, Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Spanx and Deliah Martin.
This, this year and the years past, the membership of the Fire Department along with the Fire Territory will be conducting a memorial service on Monday, May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three to honor those who have preceded us and paid tribute to the past firefighters and police officers. There will be a silent parade to the veterinarian's memorial located at the Old Maryville Cemetery on East Seventy-third Avenue. The parade lineup will be at eleven A.M. at the Old Town Hall located at Thirteen West Seventy-third Avenue. With the parade starting at ten fifteen, the parade will proceed east down Seventy-third Avenue where short ceremony will commence as well as the memory memorial for us to being late. This concludes my report.
Department Reports slash Town Manager, Department Director, and Department Directors, and Mr. Redon.
Our Town's update website launched on May first. It includes an email update feature where residents can sign up and be alerted on events and updates of their choosing. Please bear with us as we work out any kinks. We will be constantly updating and adding tools for the residents, visitors, and business Maryville monument update. The town is requesting residents and business ideas and feedback on our comprehensive plan. We want to reflect the needs of property of everyone in our town links to the plans website where you can share ideas and fill out a survey or on our Facebook page at facebook dot com slash thetownofmaryville and our website at maryville.in.gov. Our third annual job fair will be on July twenty-seventh from eleven to three at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Look for more information on our website and Facebook page coming later this month regarding sponsorship and booth rental. That concludes my report.
Town Manager, Mr. Redon and Malachi Whitlow. Citizen Parti- Parti- Participation Plan.
With, with the audience's indulgence, will not read the entire plan. The, the following three items are associated with the Town's Twenty-three Application for Community Development Block Grant. And you'll note on the agenda, there are three, uh, identi- uh, identified items, Citizen Participation Plan, Affirmative Action, uh, Program, and the third, Section Three Understanding. These are all part and parcel to the Town's application, which will be submit- submitting, pardon me, in the following week. So, why don't you go re- repeat what these are, please?
Citizen Parti- Parti-
That's okay. Take your time.
It's a big word.
Parti- Participation Plan, Affirmative Action Program, Section Three Understanding.
Yes. And we would, we would ask for a motion from the council to approve these, uh, elements of the block grant application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a motion to approve?
You did a second. We actually need a motion. She was asking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second is? Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Cause you elaborate on affirmative action program?
Town of Marygro- Maryville agrees to implement the following Sispific Affirmation Action Steps Direct, uh, Increasing the Utilization of Lower Income Residents and Program Area Businesses. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Affirmation Action Program. No, oh yeah, yeah. Planning and Building, Mrs. Shine and Aubrey Preno, Prento.
The Maryve- The Maryville Community School Corporation is in the process of interior and exterior renovations to existing Maryville schools. According to Chris Garrity of the Performance Services, Maryville Community School Corporation will invest approximately one hundred million dollars over the next five years for school renovations. Interior and exterior remodel permits have been issued to Performance Services for Aiding's Elementary School, Fielder Elementary School, and Maryville High School Athletic Stadium. Future permits will be issued for Maryville High School Cafeteria Edition, Maryville High School Career and Technical Education Building Edition, Maryville High School Interior Remodel, and Mi- Miller Elementary School Cafeteria Edition. Five elementary schools will be replacing and adding playground equipment. Permits will be issued for parking lot and sidewalks replacement and repairs. Edward Rose Nuvo Flats. Edward Royal's Properties, Inc. Has begun building the Nuvo Flats apartment complex. The two hundred seventy unit apartment complex is on twenty-eight acre parcel located between Broadway and Interstate sixty-five in Maryville. The developer, Edward Rose Properties, Inc., is planning to include twenty-four three-bedroom units with the remainder being one and two bedroom. The amenities include a clubhouse, fitness room, pool deck, and fire pits. Five of the twelve buildings and garage permits were issued on April tenth. The project will be completed in two years. This concludes the building report.
Economic Development, Ms. Chocot and Brooklyn McCumber.
We are pleased to announce the Town of Maryville Community Video is now available. The town partnered with CGI Digital to coordinate and produce a series of educational videos highlighting Maryville and everything we offer to residents, visitors, and businesses. The video can be viewed on the Town's website. The tour will allow viewers to learn more about area attractions, quality of life, and economic development. The overall goal was to be able to showcase what makes Maryville a great place to learn, live, work, and play. And I think we accomplished exactly that.
Street Department, Mr. King and Justin Gobber.
Townwide Tree Branch Pickup Program was completed to May fifth, twenty twenty-three. Residents can still bring branches to our North Born at fifty-seven fifty Tyler Street. We are changing over to our summer operations, which include- We are changing over to our summer operations, which includes hot patching, cracked ceiling, mowing of town-owned property, residential sidewalk replacement, and whatever other issues arise on a daily basis. We are also continuing with our town-wide street sweeping operations. Construction has started on our Eighty-sixth Avenue Extension Project between Maryville Road and Broadway. This project consists of new storm sewer, curb and gutter, asphalt pavement, and street lighting. Construction continues on our CNO Trail Project, which includes one-point-five miles of new pedestrian trial, a hawk, a hawk lighting signal on Tav Street for safe pedestrian crossing at park benches. Construction will begin soon on our community costing grant projects.
I just wanna make a quick comment. Were we gonna say something about the auction? I didn't see it on the agenda. The auction for, so this Saturday, uh the thirteenth of May, we're having the town auction. Um, I guess it could be out here in the parking lot um from, from nine to, nine to noon, so I just wanted to mention that.
This concludes our report. Thank you.
Human Resources, Mrs. Pe- Mrs. Pettit and Taylor, Taylor Park.
The Human Resources Department continues to post available job openings, interview, hire, and train new employees. Last month, we brought back our Employee of the Month award. The Employee of the Month will be selected based on working well with others who may have different values and cultural beliefs. Working side by side with the Street and Parks Departments, we are putting forth a new effort to hire a summer cleanup crew. We are looking for high school students to work part-time this summer to make sure our town is clean. If anyone is interested, they can reach out to Erica or Kathy in the Human Resources Office. Thank you.
Town Court, Judge Velasco and Nat- and Na- Natalie Cox Kemp.
We have no report for this time.
Parks and Creation, Mr. Price and Terrence Harvey.
Join us for fun this summer at the Dean and Barbara Wright Community Center, where we will be offering opportu- opportunities for kids all ages. June thirteen, July twenty-fifth, eleven A.M. to one P.M. It's inspiring, empowering, educating. Students learn how to braid hair. Maryville High School Books and Ball Basketball Camp, June fifth to nineteen. This concludes my report.
Police Department Chief Newses and Joshua Timmo.
Thank you and good evening, Council. My name is Joshua Tomo, and I am the Chief of Police at the Maryville Police Department. I'd like to start by saying that summertime is right around the corner and will be stepping up patrols. You'll also be seeing more of our A.T.V.s and U.T.V.s along with our motorcycles as weather gets nicer as well. We are aiming at doing proactive police work to help Maryville's community peaceful and safe. Also, I'd like to remind everybody of the upcoming event on May twenty-fifth from six P.M. to eight P.M. at the Dean and Barbara White Center. It's a great chance for the public to meet with the officers of the Maryville Police Department. That is all I have. Thank you.
Fire Department Chief Yerga and, and Lauren Latham.
The Maryville Fire Department is proud to be partnered with the Crown Point Fire Department on building a joint training facility. This facility will be utilized for both departments to better train themselves on a regular basis to better respond to emergencies in both communities. This will also give both, if, this will also give both departments a location to train with each other. This facility, the facility is being built with the help of many local companies and unions. Some of the biggest help has been provided by Chicago Steel and the Iron Workers Local Union. We would not be able to have this facility without the generous help. This concludes my report.
Code Enforcement, Mrs. Bunnell and Ernesto Hernandez.
I'm the Code Enforcement Officer, and my name is Ernesto Hernandez. As Code Enforcement, I'm responsible for enforcement of various town ordinances. We issue warnings for grass and weed, violations, junk or abandoned vehicles, debris issues on the outside of properties, despair of houses and businesses, the, and other nuisances. And the problem is not taken care of with the warning then. Citations are issued. In the winter, we can remove vehicles parked on the street after two inches' snowfall for properties in severe despair, oh, disrepair. We have a bright hearing which deals with buildings that are badly damaged to either get them repaired or removed. We also identify vacant properties and attempt to contact their owners of these properties. We que- we request owners to register vacant properties so we have information for any future problems. Also, I have another question for the whole crowd. This isn't on the script. Where is the restroom?
Okay, okay.
That concludes my report.
Clerk's Treasurer, Clerk's Treasurer Report, Mrs. White Gibson and Evelyn Hughes.
The Maryville Clerk Treasurer's Office is a government agency responsible for the management of financial transactions and records for the town of Maryville, Indiana. The officials, the office serves as the central respiratory of all financial information related to the town's budget, revenue, and expenditures. It is a, its prime, primary responsibility is to maintain accurate and timely finance records as well as to ensure compliance with local state financial reg- regulated regulations. The Maryville Clerk Treasurer's Office also oversees the collection and distribution of all town funds. This includes the management of payroll and benefits for town employee. The process of tax payments is li- and license fee, and the distribution of funds to other town departments and agencies. Additionally, the office is responsible for pro- for providing financial reports to the town council and other stakeholders, as well as assisting with development of the town's annual budget. But the offo- the office plays a crucial role in assuring the efficiency and effective operation of the town's finances. In addition to its financial management responsibilities, the Mary Clerk Treasurer's Office also provides a variety of other services to the public. One of the most notable is its passports acceptance service, which allows residents to apply for and renew their US passports. The office also issues animal license for pet owners, as well as business license for entrepreneurs looking to operate in the town. Additionally, the office is responsible for alarm reg- registration and ensuring that all alarm systems within the town are properly registered and monitored. Furthermore, the Maryville Clerk Treasurer's Office also handles hazardous material registration, which helps to ensure that the town is prepared to respond to any potential hazardous materials incidents. Finally, the office provides access to public records allowing rec- residents to access important information about the town's government and operations. Overall, the Maryville Clerk Treasurer's Office plays an important role in serving the needs of the town's residents, both in terms of financial manag- management and the provision of very, various essential services.
Town Attorney Report, Mr. Sniff. You know what, I'm just saying. Attorney Joe and Jackson Co- Coer. Coward.
My name is Jackson Coward, and I am the Town Attorney for the Town of Maryville, Indiana. I currently represent the Town Council Board of Zoning Appeals, Plan Commission, Economic Development Commission, and Redevelopment Commission. The town seeks our opinion to better prepare and evaluate all of their options and often minimize the likelihood of disputes. I analyze the situation and provide the best possible position to avoid litigation or liability. I am committed to ensuring that the town has the guidance and advocacy necessary to manage risk and defend claims. This concludes our report.
General Orders. Second Readings. Order, order, order- Ordinance twenty-three dash one fourteen.
Ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen, an ordinance vacating a portion of a forty-foot-wide unimproved frontage road in the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana.
Madam President, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table this ordinance. Uh Sheila informed me this week that there is a legal situation. Sheila, we need thirty days between readings. Is that correct? State statute requires thirty days. We read this at the last council meeting, so we have to wait until our meeting on the twenty-third, Mr. Whitford.
Second, Mr. President.
Most of Mr. Pettit and a second chair recognize Mr. Hardaway to table this ordinance.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Span and, sorry, Sanaya. Mrs. Span and Daria Martin.
Yes.
Vice President Hardaway and Leland Ray.
Yes.
Christopher Bland.
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak and Royce Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit and Isis Selby. Mr. White and William Tolson.
Yes.
President Bella and Sanaya Fisher.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Motion carries. Ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen. Clerk Treasurer, can you read this?
An ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake Country, Indiana appropriating additional monies within the various fire protection territory funds and for the year of twenty-twenty-three, not included with the current budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Pub- Public Comment. Roll call vote.
Ward one, Mr. Span and Daria Martin.
Yes.
Ward two, Vice President Hardaway and Leland Ray.
Yes.
Ward three, Mr. Minchuck and Christopher Bland.
Yes.
Ward four, Mr. Us- Miss Uselak and Royce Edwards.
Yes.
Ward six, Mr. Pettit and Isis Selby.
Yes.
Mr. White and William Tolson, Ward seven.
Yes.
Ward five, President Bella and Sanaya Fisher.
Yes.
Six.
Motion passes. Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen. Clerk Treasurer, can you read this?
A re- resolution authoriz- authorizing and directing the Town Council President of the Town of Maryville to submit a project proposal to the Community Development Block Grant Funds for Festival Fiscal Years twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve. Most of Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen.
A resolution authorizing and directing the Town Council President and of the Town Maryville to submit a project proposal for the Community Development Block Grant Funds for Federal Fi- Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-three. Whereas, under the provision of Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen-seventy-four, as amended to date, Lake County, Indiana is authorizing to provide financial assistance to unit to units of general location, local government for undertaking and carrying out community development activities. And whereas is provided such a act that the unit of general local government shall provide satisfactory assurance prior to submission of its applicant application that has held one public hearing to obtain the views of the citizens of community developed needs. And whereas is desirable and in public interest that the Town of Maryville undertake and carry out community development needs. And whereas the Town of Maryville is proposing a project of, for assistance under the Housing and Community Development Act nineteen-seventy-four as amendment to date, aid and propose to undertake and make available total project cost one hun- one hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. Whereas, the Town of Maryville has held one formal public hearing to propose programs and has made available to the general public through mass media and other resources information concerning the program. And whereas the Town of Maryville has general knowledge of proposals such as funds and cognizant and the conditions that are imposed in the undertaking of the federal finance and so assistance under Title One, including those prohibited discrimination because of race, colors, creed, sex, or national, national origin. And now, therefore, it be resolved by the Town of Maryville, Indiana. Section one, that the Town Council President of the Town Maryville in, is hereby au- authorized to file a project proposal for funds under Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act nineteen-seventy-four as amended today, with Lake County, Indiana provided all information and resources as may be necessary under the act. Maryville Town Council.
Any comment? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Amer- American Rescue Plan, A.P. Vouch Re- Register Summary for A.R.P. purchases for May ninth. American Rescue Plan, AP Vouch Register Summary for ARP purchases for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Hardaway.
I make a motion. That's the ARP. Harder. Sixty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy seconds to be approved. That's my motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. BZA and Large Gathering Actions.
Madam President, we have three petitions this evening. Our first petition is Leonard White. Would you please approach the podium? The applicant is Leonard White, petitioner Leonard White, and Crossroads Plaza is the owner. Petitioner is seeking a variance of use approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow an office and event space on twenty point six oh six acres in M-two limited industrial corridor zoning district. The petitioner would like to occupy the space with the office and a space for business events. An environmental management consultant agency and a professional trades international will occupy the office space. The event space will be used to host business events and small gatherings. Petitioner will hire security for gatherings and evenings events. The space is approximately two thousand square feet. Property was zone M-two to attract an industrial user for the property. The owner has not attracted any industrial users. Two retail businesses have received a use variance for this property. The hours of operation will be ten AM to nine PM, Monday through Friday. There will be approximately two employees. The petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance and this is for this petitioner only, for this location only, and for this use only.
Thank you, Counsel. Again, my name is Councilman Leonard White. I am seeking that variance specifically because I think that that area on Sixty-first Avenue has been abandoned, not abandoned, but has been vacant in a lot of those storefronts out there. So I decided with my own money to try to do something to help bring the area up, pretty much like I've been doing the entire time here. And what I also am looking for is because I'm definitely an environmental expert and my job is to do environmental things. As you see, I'm on the Environmental Committee. And what I want to do is that since I'm having my environmental firm there, I'm going to be trying to work with the Town of Maryville or MCD District to start testing the sewer systems for the COVID virus. I think those technologies have not been used adequately here and I would like to definitely try to get those things started. I'm also working with Professional International Trade Union, I'm sorry, Union. What this union wants to do with us is also to train young people to have a skill and some classroom space there. So I would ask the Council to approve of this. One thing I'm sure it's going to do for our area is going to show that we're also just not looking at other people to be invested. We're also taking that step for ourselves. So I'm asking Counsel to approve of that variance for me tonight. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you for the second. Continue.
I'm sorry, what did you just say, Mr. White?
Well, when a young man said he seconded, I thought that that was a second. Is there not a second on the floor?
Is that not a second, Mr. Hardaway? No, it's not.
Mr. President, given the circumstances, I'm going to make a motion to table this. This is the first I'm hearing of this. And the reason, the other reason I'm tabling this, and I'm going to table the other two petitions, they'll be forewarned, is the event venue. We've got a ninety-five thousand square foot facility up there with a ten thousand square foot Mike Anderson Event Center that we all ought to be promoting people to use. And I understand we've had these petitions before and other people have gotten approved. I need more time to digest this. So with all due respect, I'm going to make a motion. It's only a table, Leonard, okay? So don't freak out. It's just a table.
I'm not freaking out yet, but there will be one.
It died for lack of a second.
It died for lack of a second, but the BZA approved of it. So what problem do the Council have with it?
Well, we can leave it on the table for ninety days and by state statute it would get the recommendation of the BZA. You want to wait ninety days or do you want to talk to the rest of us?
You do what you think you do. You know, you are in front of people here, so act like this thing is working for everybody. I think that me and my student here have supported everything that came on the Council tonight. And it shouldn't be that big of an issue. Basically, all the millions of dollars shined that I approved for you, even some tonight. I'm trying to figure out why you, I know why you guys are doing it, but that's not going to get you where you need to go with me. So if you table it tonight, then I probably will show up with my attorney the next time. You cannot deny me due process. Okay, now you're getting me started. You won't deny me due process because you know that I have to have due process. So is this Council violating my rights? I just want to know so I can file a complaint against it. See, I'm on this side of the dial now and we're going to talk about these things. Audience, this is what this Council has done for quite some time. They have no business in up here telling another councilman that he can't have something that he put in there because they political. This is what this whole thing is about, it's political.
Mr. White, we have a motion on the floor to table. Is there a second for the motion to table? First motion.
We got a new Council here, so go ahead.
I second that first motion.
It was a second. Obviously, the current councilman didn't say it loud enough, but his student did. So I'm going to go by that first second. If you want to go ahead and say no, then you go ahead and say no because you know who Leonard is. You know it's not going to be in right here. What is the suggestion for? Just do your job.
I don't know necessarily if the student can initiate.
You know, okay, then everything we saw, we talked about tonight.
A denial, a deferral on this matter is not a denial of due process.
Well, tell me the reason why it's denied then. Just don't say, oh, I don't want to do that. But he know, I mean, you guys had that agenda for.
Not a denial, Leonard.
Well, then just approve of it so we can move forward. I spent my money down there already.
Agenda on the twenty-third so we can discuss this and find out the details. If you remember, Mr. White, I was the one that voted against the rezoning of that center. I wanted it to stay commercial, but we were going to make this an industrial area, right?
This is why we can't move forward here in this town because we have individuals up there that stop what should be happening. I'm glad people are here to see this. I'm glad the news media is here to see it because it's wrong. And if you're going to do wrong stuff, then expect for the next seven months, I'll be here. Thank you.
Is there, is there a second to table?
Yeah, I made a second. Second by Mr. Spann.
I said what? I didn't know what it was.
The second. The second. All in favor, all in favor. To table this, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Madam President, our second petitioner is Jose Ramirez, petitioner and owner. Petitioner and owner of Fifty-five Twenty-four Broadway. Petitioner is seeking a special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a dining and restaurant to be located at Fifty-five Twenty-four Broadway in a C-two community commercial zoning district. Petitioner would like to open a Mexican restaurant to be known as Taco Rico. The restaurant was previously a barbecue restaurant. The restaurant has been approved for thirty seats and the parking is adequate for the restaurant. The petitioner has had an interior and exterior remodel of the building. He has replaced the pylon sign. This is the second location for the petitioner. He owns Taco Rico located at nine twenty-two Hoffman Street in Hammond, Indiana. The hours of operation for the Maryville location will be ten AM to eight PM, seven days a week, and there will be two employees. This is a family-run business for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only, and the petitioner is aware of the Maryville camera ordinance.
Hi, my name is Jose Ramirez and I'm looking approval to open a family-owned restaurant.
Is there a motion of approval?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. White, second by Mr. Spann. Open for discussion. Any discussion?
Yes. How many employees will you have?
It's going to be only two.
Just two?
Yeah.
That is family employed?
Yeah, that'd be me and probably one of my siblings.
And what are your hours for business?
Right now, we're going to probably, we're thinking around the area, they're pretty much closed early, so we're trying to stay around the same timing. I want to say probably, we're probably going to start with eleven to eight or nine the latest.
Eleven till nine?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ward one, Mr. Spann and Dariah Martin.
Yes.
Ward two, Vice President Hardaway and Leland Ray. Ward three, Mr. Minchuck and Christopher Bland.
Yes.
Ward four, Ms. Usulak and Royce Edwards.
Yes.
Ward six, Mr. Pettit and Isis Selby.
Yes.
Ward five, President Bella and Sanaya Fisher.
Yes.
Ward seven, Mr. White and William Tolson.
Yes.
Five in favor and one abstention.
Motion carries.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Our last petitioner of the evening is Kiana Jones, petitioner and Dan Guerin owner. She is seeking a special exception approval for an event venue. Petitioners seeking special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow an event venue for private parties and workshops. The two thousand three hundred and fifty-four square foot building will host to private parties, wellness retreats, educational seminars, children's parties, pop-up shop for local businesses. The operational hours will primarily be after the business in the area are closed. Security will be on-site for every event. The space will accommodate a maximum of a hundred and twenty seated people. All food will be catered, no cooking on-site. The space is an open concept, two bathroom kitchenette and storage room. The hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday, twelve noon to ten PM, Friday, five PM to twelve AM, Saturday, eight AM to twelve AM, and Sundays, eight AM to twelve AM. For this petitioner only, at this location only, and the petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Kiana.
Thank you. I want to first start by saying I am very honored to be in the presence of these children, so thank you and I'm inspired by what you're doing tonight. I have a five-year-old daughter myself and so this is just really motivating to me. Part of my goal is to reengage the community. I'm an HR director and I've just seen, particularly after the pandemic, what us being shut down have done to ourselves. And so I'm hoping to reengage the community and bring people together to help celebrate and push people to being, you know, more comfortable with gathering and enjoying life. And so I want to primarily allow people to rent out the space, but also to host my own events. I'm a part of a couple community service-based organizations and so I want to be able to host things like wellness retreats, which I've done my first one this past year for women, and so to continue to do things like that. But I also have a five-year-old daughter and so one of my goals and what I believe God is pushing me to do is just teach her the skill of entrepreneurship and to show her how to be a leader and to show her and help her to be running a business with me and to do work for our communities and for ourselves and so establishing a legacy with her. So that's my goal, but are there any questions about anything in particular about the business?
So with your goal, are you charging your clients?
Yes, so I will be charging to rent out the space for, you know, showers, bridal showers, baby showers, birthday parties. I'm now seeing people, students who are actually being very extravagant for proms and so they're now utilizing event venues for that. So I just want to be able to use a space for people to come and, you know, for their own personal gatherings, but also for any events that I will host. More than likely will charge for that, but if not, you know, if I'm doing it more personally through like organizations that I'm connected to, will be flexible.
Well, how do you think your business is going to go when we have a community center? They are renting out rooms for showers, weddings, and everything you're talking about.
Yes. My, and from what I can see, the types of spaces that are already out here will be a different look and feel for what I will be offering, more of a rusted look, so kind of like an elegant look. The best example I can give is if you think about Chicago, like the lofty spaces. So the inside of the venue will be a particularly different look for people to utilize.
Motion to approve.
Mr. President, as I said on the first petition and as Chairman of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, at this time I'm going to make a motion to table. And again, a table does not mean denial. I need to get more information. I need to talk to Torrance, to Barb, my committee, which Leonard is a part of. We need to sit down and find out what's going on at the Mike Anderson Event Center. I get competition, folks, believe me. Trust me, I understand it. But we spent a lot of money on that facility and it's got the ability to host these different events and it has, and we've gotten accolades all over Lake County about the Mike Anderson Event Center. And I appreciate you going into business, man. I appreciate what you're trying to do, Leonard, but I think I have a responsibility to that community center, to Torrance, and to these citizens to find out, is there a problem in not renting the Mike Anderson Event Center? Is there that big of a demand? Are we overbooked that you guys have the ability and the opportunity to take advantage of it? That's great. Give me thirty days. That's all I'm asking is give us. That's all I'm asking, is give us thirty days. It's not a big ask. So that's my motion, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Table for thirty days.
I never knew that a big business had here in Maryville had anything to do with the Dean and Barbara White Center. You remember, you the one that said they was gonna create all these economic development. Well, that's what it's doing. And now you're saying that I have to compete with those guys? I'm two thousand square feet, y'all ninety thousand square feet.
Yeah, but we compete against Avalon, too. We compete against the Greek, all the other halls, the Greek church. We still compete against them.
It's shameful that this crowd of people, these young people here, seeing how politics, the bad side of politics. It's not good. I've been here three and a half years. It's been the same thing for three and a half years, so this is not the first time. So just because you can stop a petitioner like her and myself, I haven't seen you stop any others. I didn't see you stop a petitioner that came to town for their company's sign to be put up, and it's you have.
Is there?
I voted for it. So, ma'am, I will vote for your petition.
I appreciate your advocacy, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a motion on the floor.
For a table.
For a table. So his motion's gotta go to first, then you can go. He made the motion.
So Mr. Hardaway made an initial motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
One second.
Okay. I got a question.
One second, sir.
One second. You can't start a business in the city unless the money is allocated towards Maryville. You can't have most of the businesses start out.
Oh, sure, you can, yeah.
So what's the problem?
Not a problem. Motion for second.
First motion on the floor was a motion to approve. We didn't vote. My name's Sean Pettit.
I'm a veteran. I don't wanna be a citizen's will. So you can't come home from the military, came far.
Point of order.
At last, the money is going to Maryville.
Sir, we're not doing public comment right now.
You can't wait to public comment?
So we got a motion on the floor and a second for approval. Special on the motion to approve.
Is there a discussion on the motion to approve?
Yes.
Ma'am, I hope the rest of them vote for you, because I'm going to.
Thank you.
I'm saying it again.
Roll call.
Ward one, Mr. Span and Daria Martin.
Yes.
Ward two, Vice President Hardaway and Leon Ray.
Yes.
Ward three, Mr. Minchuck and Christopher Bland.
Yes.
Ward four, Ms. Uselik and Royce Edwards.
Yes.
Ward six, Mr. Pettit and Isis Selby.
Yes.
Ward seven, and Miss, Ward seven, Mr. White and William Thompson.
Yes.
Ward five, President Bella and Sanaya Fisher.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Any old business? Any new business? Special presentations, Mr. Hardaway.
The town would like to honor Mr. The town would like to honor Christopher Bynum for the efforts as a volunteer to improve our community. Chris led an effort to clean up a portion of fifty-eighth Avenue that is east of Broadway. This was a large hack since the area has accumulated lots of brush and debris. As a result, the area now looks much better and will inspire others to step up to improve the pride and appearance of our town. Let us now present the word to show our appreciation to Christopher Bynum.
Thank you. Along Fifty-Eighth Avenue between Broadway and Pennsylvania Street, if you ride through there now, and if you remember what it looked like probably six months ago, it is totally different. Mr. Bynum, along with Matt Lake and some of Mr. Bynum's friends, they got together, and they saw that that area was in need of some rehabilitation, and so they got together, and he worked, I don't know how many days, but, and how many truckloads, but he took all of the, he cut down the trees, he removed all of the trees, he delivered them to Public Works on his own dime. And so I am proud to present to Mr. Bynum this plaque. This plaque that says, presented to Christopher Bynum, outstanding citizen, volunteer, in recognition of your tireless and selfless contributions for the betterment of our community.
Thank you all. I wanna say thank you.
Mr. President? Yes, I just wanted to add something to the, I'm glad Mr. Bynum. I'm glad Mr. Bynum, thank, I met you, Mr. Bynum, the other day when you were working for Mr. Hardaway at the Poland Place.
It was Joe Petrouch.
Yes, and then, and then you also have, you also hosted Mr. Hardaway's signs in front of your building, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, sure, I sure did, yeah. Is that, is there a problem with it?
It's not a problem with me, I just wanna make sure people understand the connection between you and Mr. Hardaway.
I mean, I support every, wait, hold on, hold on, I'll speak for myself. I support everyone, okay? I don't just support, just, I don't show favors, I support everyone in the community and everything, like to keep the upkeeping and everything, okay? I mean, if you got a problem with anybody, you don't have to take your frustration out on me, you can speak to the public or whoever you got the problem with. Have a nice day. Thank you all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like for Mrs. Bynum to come forward, please.
Bona?
Bona. Okay, hold that. Don't be smelling. Now, if you're gonna cry, you're gonna have to go sit down. Okay, on behalf of the Maryville Town Council, and more importantly, myself, because I've worked with her for years doing municipal day, and it saddens me to say that this is her last municipal day, because she will be retiring. And so she has been a great asset, not only to the students at M I S, but also to the town of Maryville. Every time we've asked her to do something, she did. She put on the back-to-school endeavor where council members, along with staff, would go out on the first day of school and welcome the kids in. And so she has been a godsend to the M I S and, most importantly, to the Maryville Community School Corporation. They are losing a great advocate. And her family, her husband, her mother, and her son are here, and it took us a lot to keep them in the back until we could get this done. So on behalf of the town, this says, to, presented to Cara Bana, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for all you do for your students. Town of Maryville Town Council, May twenty twenty-three. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, at the end of this meeting, I'd like for everybody from the school, all of the school board members, the superintendent, and everyone to please take a picture with her as a kind gesture. Thank you. You wanna say something? Go ahead, say something.
First of all, this is not about me tonight. Can we give these kids a round of applause? Because they were fantastic. We are so proud of you. I just wanna thank the town of Maryville. I'm a graduate of Maryville, gave thirty years of my life to the Maryville School Corporation, from a teacher to a principal. But all in all, all of the kids, you are the reason why I have stayed and I've been here, and I thank you for all your efforts tonight. Thank you to the town of Maryville for all of your support. We've got school board members here tonight, superintendent. It's been an honor and a privilege to live my passion as an educator in Maryville. So thank you again for this recognition.
That's the end of the presentations. Thank you very much.
Public comment? Public comment? Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comment to three minutes.
Okay. How you doing? I was born in Chicago, I'm a veteran, I'm a graduate of South Suburban, I'm a supervisor at the Federal Post Office. I just had a couple of questions. Being an entrepreneur, I wanted to know, was it illegal to monopolize where only one business can make money, but other businesses cannot come in? It's called the Sherman Act. So I wanna know, why is it illegal? Or why is it made where entrepreneurs cannot bring businesses into the community when it affects only Maryville making money? My question was for the gentleman that tabled the conversation for thirty days.
That's me, yeah, it is. And I think that we don't discourage that. In fact, there's been venues, previous event venues that have been approved, if you check the record with Ms. Shine. So I have voted for those in the past, but more and more, I have to look at what the future is gonna be for the Mike Anderson Event Center at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
Man, isn't that illegal, monopolization, according to the Sherman Act?
I think the term was, night, he wanted to go ahead, require more information, investigate the situation. That's why it's suggested, it's not a monopolization of the marketplace.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Nada Doty. I live at eleven thirty-four West Seventy-second Court. I am coming to the stand today to talk about the standing water again. It is back. That's further letting me know that what they did in my backyard is not working, they just put a Band-Aid on the situation. The water is still there. So what are we gonna do about this situation? I'ma come every council meeting, I'ma voice my opinion until something is done. Also, I need to ask, Ms. Sheila, I know we went through this already, but the town has a responsibility as far as my pool, it is destroyed, my whole backyard is destroyed. What are we gonna do about my pool? Y'all the one that voted for these people to come in, they came in, destroyed everything, destroyed my backyard, and now I'm supposed to be responsible for the pool? I don't think so. So we gotta come up with some kind of solution to this issue. And I'ma come every two weeks or whenever we have a meeting, and I'm gonna repeat the same thing over and over to somebody, fix my pool and get this standing water out of my backyard. And you guys voted on Arbor Day, for what? When y'all cut all the trees down in my backyard, it looked like a dump backyard back there, like you just, all I see is wild animals, seagulls, and geese. It looked bad out there. I hate to even open up my back door to look outside. It's horrible back there. So what are y'all gonna do? Y'all voting on Arbor Day for who? Not for none, not nobody in my backyard, 'cause y'all cut all the trees down. So what y'all so proud about? Let's address some of these issues. I'm tired of coming up here, but I'ma be here every time y'all have a meeting, I'ma voice the same thing. Mr. President, help me out here. You know, I've been here.
I think we've looked at all that, ma'am. Didn't we take a look at the water, the drainage issue? The developers putting in three trucks basin from the back as part of the plan. Not done yet, right? It's not done yet. Ma'am, the developers gonna take care of that, it's just not finished yet.
Okay, let's go to the second issue, Mr. President. Let's talk about all the damage that's been done to my yard and my pool. That Doug, I think that was his name, who promised, I still got all the emails, I got everything he said, that they were gonna take care of it. Then Ms. Sheila said that Maryville has, we don't have nothing to do with it, but y'all do, because y'all voted on this stuff. So what about my pool? My grandson can't even enjoy our pool, I have a big pool in the backyard, I can't even enjoy it. All you see is crickets, frogs, and dirt. So what about my backyard? What about my pool? They getting it tax-free, but I'm paying taxes on it. So we gotta do something about this. I'm paying taxes on something I can't even enjoy, but everybody is coming here and do tax-free stuff. So I need to, we need to work on some kind of solution here.
Ms. Shine?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ms. Shine?
Did we talk to the developer about the pool issues, wasn't it checked out?
He did. Checked it out, but he didn't feel that he was liable for what, for her pool.
Okay, so what do I need, so we're gonna move forward to what I need to do now, because he is liable, and then y'all partially liable, too, because y'all hired these people to do a job that they turned this town, everything out in my backyard. I'm paying no taxes, I can't even go outside and enjoy my own backyard. That's not fair to me as a resident. Mr. President, I keep coming up here with the same thing over and over, and I keep hearing the same, but we not getting anywhere. So how long is it gonna look into it? How long is this gonna last?
Talk to the developer again, you're gonna have.
I'll give it to the next council meeting, I'll be back.
My name is Terrence Harvey, senior. My son over here, Terrence Junior, T J. I just really thank God that you all doing a great job with the kids. The thing I wanna bring up is earlier this school year, my son brought home a book from the school library. And I didn't like what it had in there, me being a preacher and a man of God. I think there was some things my son brought to my attention that I was upset about. You know, I know his principal, and she's a great lady, I'm not for sure if you all aware of it, but it was some sexually explicit content in there that I think was way too young, and I had to sit down and have a talk with my son about sexual acts that we don't believe in, I know other folks maybe, but I think, I don't care if it was hetero or homo, it shouldn't have been brought up at that school age. I don't think these books should be in the school. You can't have the Bible in the library.
Sir, we have nothing to do.
I know you don't. What I'm saying, I'm bringing up the point of, you know, are we aware and can these books be removed? Can somebody go through and find out what books on the shelf? So somebody else kid don't bring home these type of explicit books that are, that are in the school and the library? Maybe you don't know about it, I'm just bringing it up.
Sir, that needs to go to the school board. That's the proper place for you to voice your concerns for that. The council can't do anything about books in the schools, ma'am.
Okay. So those who are the school board who are here, and mostly to you parents, I just wanna make you aware. If you don't know, I was surprised when my son brought it to me, but maybe the next school board meeting, I think some books are inappropriate and some of the writings, and it was disguised as a cartoon and something else. But when we actually went through it, I was very surprised what was in there and not happy about it, so I just wanna bring, to the council, we, I think Mr. White said something about testing for COVID in the sewers.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, what's the purpose of that and how much money is going to that? That's.
Yeah, we're not sure, that's what we're gonna find out.
That's 'cause they don't listen to me. Here's the thing.
But we do listen to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My studies on the sewer systems show that when the. My studies on the sewer systems show that when the coronavirus dies, it gives up a skeleton. That skeleton makes a determination of how much of a concentration of that skeleton is in a specific area. So if you start trending and tracking that, then you can start seeing the COVID virus infections in the community increase because whatever comes through your breath comes out elsewhere. So those were five places that have five pumping stations. And those pumping stations feeds specific parts of Maryville. So if we had another outbreak, the first thing would happen in that outbreak would be that we start to see our COVID skeleton bones, which we call ourselves DNA. They call the virus RNA. So it just tells you about where everything's jumping. Then we could start doing something early, like way before the CDC or the Indiana Health Department say, hey, you guys got an outbreak coming. Well, we will see it first and we'll know exactly what area to go and address it. So that's what I want to do.
Okay. I'm gonna leave it, I'm gonna leave it at that. Because I just think there's all kinds of diseases too that we're looking at, but I'm gonna leave it there.
Good evening, President Bella, Town Council members, city administrators, community members and esteemed guests. My name is Macy O'Rainey. I'm a resident of Maryville, Indiana Prairie Creek Homeowners Association. President Bella, a large reason as to why my wife and I took out a thirty-year fixed mortgage to move to the town of Maryville. We love its diversity. We love its stable tax base. And most importantly, we're satisfied with the education system in the town of Maryville. Matter of fact, what you guys are doing this evening with the young people modeling for them, the way the democratic notion works in our country is a huge part of their education. In fact, in school is where I learned the Bill of Rights. In school is where I learned the Indiana Constitution. In school is where I learned what it means for the notion of e pluribus unum. Out of many, we are one. So we take pride in making sure that our school and our educational system benefits the tax base in Maryville. For example, I don't know if you guys were aware, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. If you can read that sign out there, if you can count the money in your checking account, fake a teacher. Because someone had to educate you. Someone had to spend time. Let's give a round of applause for our teachers. Also, to further highlight the quality of education that we have in this community. I don't know if you guys are aware, but Maryville High School has hosted this year. Name a recipient for the Lilly Foundation Scholarship winner. That's full tuition, room and board books for a student. Full paid tuition for four years. And in case you guys don't know by now, the price of college in the state of Indiana is twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Unless you have twenty-two thousand dollars a year that paid toward a public institution. Scholarships and grants are the order of the day. So it's with great pleasure to recognize that Maryville High School, right here in our community, has a Lilly Foundation Scholarship winner right in our presence. And as I also, before I sit down, want to take a moment of privilege to thank and highlight and spotlight all of the mothers, foster mothers, grandmothers and caregivers of our community that nurture and provide the nurturing for all of our students. Life may not come with instructions, but it does come with a mother. Thank you.
Ryan Messarch, two oh one, E sixty-eighth place. The idea that Sean Pettit and Town Council would be against businesses is absolutely ridiculous. Your job is not to judge whether or not your facility has competition or not. Your job is to judge whether or not someone is opening a business. Do they have all the right permits, et cetera? They're going to pay taxes in property taxes invoices and sales tax, et cetera. That's economic development. That's how a community thrives. That's how we get money to pay for things. It's not the town's job to worry about competition. If you want to worry about competition, have a meeting and figure out why your facility is just so expensive or what your facility can do to be better. That's what you need to do, not chastise other business owners as to what they want to do. If Mr. White wants to run with a business idea and he has the money, he should be allowed to. If somebody wants to open a business, a shoe store, anything, they should be allowed to as long as they have the proper documentation. It's not a matter of whether or not we have the money to run a community center, which it should actually be for the community. We shouldn't be in competition with the churches and the church halls and the other facilities that are for hire. We should be worried about whether or not we are serving the community with the community center. That's what we ought to be worried about. Thank you.
Just to voice my opinion with the kind man who were talking about the books. I would like to just say that one time my friend brought, brought to us a book that she found from the school library that, and she very much likes history. So she likes books like that. And while scrolling through the pages, she found nude pictures and stuff that should not be shown to fifth graders. So I just wanted to ask, where and who should I talk to to talk about the school library books? Should I talk to Ms. Trusick, who is the dean of students, or somebody more like the principal?
Like Ms. Rogers?
Ms. Rogers is an assistant principal.
Yeah, maybe the school board.
The school board.
Where exactly would the school board be? Like where should I go to talk to them?
Talk to, talk to your principal, baby. Talk to.
So Ms. Bono?
I would, I would talk to your dean and your principal first.
Okay.
Okay.
Or should I talk, just talk to the librarian?
Start, start with the librarian. It may be, it may be a historical book that it could be years old. Talk to the librarian first and get a reference for it first, okay?
Okay.
And then take it from there.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is James and this is Ivy Wilcher. We live thirty seventy-three West Seventy-Third Place in Maryville, Indiana. Starting early last week and this week, they've been digging up our yard in front of our house in the city. I don't know, they saying that we had issues with the flow of water that go to the canal right by Independence, the water facility. They dug it up without notice and it's, and the way my house is facing is right in front of my front door. They digging up my grass, digging up the street in front of our house is a big inconvenience. My son, the park, right about Ruzabon Park. My son goes to that park, but he can't get there. He gotta go all the way around because of the construction that's going on. And it's just a big inconvenience for us because one was not told about it. They just came one day, marked up our whole yard and started digging up our front yard, which we take great care of our yard. We spend a lot of time working on that yard. We have a landscaper come and fertilize it and weed kill it, but then now they telling us they gonna put a manhole in our yard, in front of our house. And we want to know, like, why wasn't we even informing about it? Or what, what's, what's the deal with it? Like, I know I, I don't know what, what's the steps to take. Because I don't want a manhole in my, my grass, which I paid good money to keep it good.
I can, I can answer this. This is all in public right of way. So technically it's on town property. These are all brand new box culverts. That's a long time coming for that area. We did hydraulic analysis and this will improve the flow, reduce flooding in the area. I'll share the plans with you. But DLZ should have notified you. There are consulting engineers on the job. But I'll get with you after the meeting and we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay. So we can get the manhole put somewhere else?
We'll get restored completely in the area. So rest assured of that. But I'll share the plans with you. We'll talk about it.
All right.
And I just, my name is Ivy Wilcher. I live at thirty seventy-three West, thirty seventy-three West Seventy-Third Place. And I just wanted to give my public comment about the construction. As my husband said, we were not notified about the construction that is taking place in front of our home. And currently there are blockages where we have to kind of, it's like a maze to get into our driveway. And at night, it's no real safe way for us to go in and out. Even in the morning because of the way our driveway is designed. If I'm parked in the front, my husband is in back of me. If he doesn't get, you know, up in the morning when I go to work, because I am a high school special ed teacher. I have to move his car first and then bring my car out. Because at first we used to just kind of travel through our grass. But now we have all these stakes there and they're digging up the grass. So it's real, there's no real safe way for us to park our car while they're doing this construction. Because if we park like alongside of our home, it's like a lot of blind spots at night, like when we're coming home and one of us can get hit, even my seven-year-old son coming in and out of the car. So there's really no solutions for us on what to do in the meantime. We don't have a duration on how long this project is going to be going. And it's just, it's just a huge inconvenience for our family and I'm, every day is something new. First it was the manhole and now it's like wooden stakes all over the yard. So we looking forward to hearing what's coming up next and what could be done to help us to be going in and out of our home safely. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Shonda Flowers, sixty-one thirty-seven Connecticut Street. First, I am so grateful to be a part and participate with these young students. They have truly impressed me tonight. The parents, pat yourselves on the back because your children did an excellent job. I am proud to be a part. So get yourselves a round of applause. I can't help but to address the elephant in the room. I think when you are in leadership, however, the agenda probably should have been a little bit different with regards to what's on here under eleven with the BCA with Leonard. We know that that's a hot topic for those of you all who are not frequent flyers. And I will say to the parents, I hope that this is how the room remains, that you come back. This is our town. We all need to be involved in what goes on here. But there is a time and a place for everything. I do want to put on record though, I do disagree with you, Councilman Pettit, as a citizen, from a perspective of Leonard's trying to get this approval. I don't think that it is a good look for the town to be in competition with prospective business owners who may want to have services that we also offer. I think it's a great look for the town, for citizens to have options. The young lady that came afterwards who also by the grace of God, being able to get her incident approved. The issue that she brought up that she's trying to do rustic. You don't have rustic event areas and it's a different look. And so I think it poses an opportunity for us as citizens. So you don't speak for me as a citizen with regards to having options. I want to be able to have options. But more importantly, I hope that we do a better job when it comes to putting the agenda. So these kids don't have to learn early on some of the ugliness that comes when it comes to being in politics and adults.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ramin Jackson. I am a resident here in Maryville and have been here for five years now. Also the senior pastor of St. Timothy Community Church in Gary. And I just wanted to say just a couple of, couple of, just two things. One is in the last five years as I've been here, I've noticed on thirty, there's a lot of potholes. And I'm not sure what's being, how's that being addressed? Because those same potholes have really been there for these last five years. The other thing I had a question about is who was the parliamentarian during these meetings? Because a lot of things that I've been hearing sitting in the back were not in order. So I don't know if there is a designated person that is the parliamentarian on the council. But for example, that the whole so moved, that is not really following the robber rules of order. And there's some other things that happened also tonight as well. But my background is not only pastoring. Also my background is I'm on the board of directors for the Urban League and also Chaplain Methodist Hospital. And also teach social justice at County College of St. Joseph's. So I'm all around and in different communities. And also engaged in our community as well and in our surrounding communities as well. And I just want to say, even in this meeting tonight, I was hoping it would have went in a little different direction so that we've been more of a, I guess mentors for these children that amongst us. I know when my, my parents would disagree about things, but we wouldn't always, we wouldn't, they wouldn't do that in front of us. But certainly act like adults and the professionalism we ought to bring certainly to our, our meetings as well. Thank you.
Sabina Miller, thirty-one twenty West Seventy-Fifth Place. Three things. First of all, I really liked what we put on with the kids here. This was really great. And definitely Mr. Hernandez here, he stands out of the crowd. I bet you his parents are quite proud of him. So I also want to reiterate that there was a lot of inappropriateness displayed. For those of us who come on a regular basis and watch the videos, we know that the council can be quite dysfunctional. And this was just one more, you know, incident of what really shouldn't be happening in this setting here. What you do behind closed doors is one thing, but this setting here, I think runs a little bit more structure. I also want to say, if I hadn't run into Matt Lake after one of the recent town council meetings, I would also not have known anything about those culverts going in. So we were not informed. So I want to confirm what Ivy said. She lives just down the street from, from me. None of us were informed about it. So when she called me today saying, what in the world is going on? They're digging holes in my yard. I actually told her that those were easements, but she should have known somebody's going to do this so that she could have better prepared, you know? And I also believe that the competition going on there should not be the number one reason for this. The community center is supposed to be a community center in the first place and not an event center. That's why we call it a community center. So the competition could be with events if I'm thinking about it. But for, for community issues, you know, I mean, it's like, I'm sorry. I'm not very structured here, but I don't feel that this is a good competition case.
I would like to thank everybody who could have made municipal day possible because I believe that this was an amazing opportunity and it was very educational as these students right here are the future. And they deserve this opportunity to learn about how things work and this type of thing. Because many students have joined this to learn more about, like, what they want to do in the future. I know that a lot of students have joined for many different reasons. But I know that this was very educational for me and it was very helpful for me to learn about the different things that go on in these meetings. And I believe that this was very helpful for the youth and it was very educational. And I think that this was an amazing opportunity.
Hi, Ivy Wilcher again. It was just brought to my attention, Matt, as I was walking away. I heard you say that the, that our land is partially owned by the city. Or, and I was just hoping to get a little clarification on that. And also if that's true, like, will you guys be able to provide me with a survey so that I can see that as well?
Sure. All the work is done in public right of way, which is town-owned land. It was also advertised twice in the paper, just so you know.
Okay.
I'm Evelyn Hughes, and I have brought, I have a, something I would like to bring up for attention. When we were told for Municipal Day that we were going to end at 7:30, that would be around our clarification. It is right now, like, 8:40. Some of us have a scheduled time that we are supposed to be at home, be in bed, but this is like going too far for me. This needs to be, this, we should have had better time management.
I motioned that. My name is Sandra Wees. I'm gonna make it very, very short. I've been out here 30-plus years. My children graduated from, from the high school. My complaint is gonna be directed to the, the code enforcer. No offense. There's a house across the street from me, and it's been tarp'd for about three years now. The house is vacant. The owner actually lives in Vaparez though. He doesn't come and, you know, clean up around it. But my husband been seeing big rats going in that facility, going in that house. So we wanna know what could be done about it, because the house has been vacant for three years, and it's all the way tarp'd. It has a black tarp on, on it, because the roof, I guess, is, you know, messed up. But he's been seeing rats going into that house. So I just wanna know what could be done about that.
Is this the house on Buchanan Street?
Yes, it's on 53rd and Buchanan.
We've been looking into it.
Okay.
We're, we can't find, the people that own the house are deceased.
I don't really know him, but I know he lives in Vaparez though, and I was told he has a business, so that's all I know.
From what we're finding out. So we're working on it, but it's hard under those circumstances.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all. Keep this brief, cuz they're bedtimes. My name is Nick Brown. I'm the proud superintendent of Maryville Community Schools. And we wanna thank all the parents for these wonderful students, and thank all these students for the job they're doing and the council for providing this opportunity. Mrs. Bowden, we, we love you, and we're gonna miss you, and you've dedicated your entire life to kids. And we just can't tell you enough how, how big a change you've made in kids' lives, so I wanna tell you thank you for that. Quickly, I just wanted to address, there are a couple of questions that came up about books in the library. And so really, the best thing to do is start with the librarian, if you're a parent or a student. And then if you're not satisfied there, then you can move to the principal of the building. And then from there, if you still have questions, you would be, can refer up into my office. We have curriculum directors, assistant superintendents, myself. And there is a whole procedure for us to look at books and review if there's something that you think is inappropriate or has content that you're, you're concerned about, and we go through that process. So I did, before you go home, wanna let you know, we do have a process procedure for that. We, we take those things seriously, and we welcome the interactions between parents and our students and our schools, and we appreciate it. And, and I hope that you are proud of our students, and they represent the, the quality and excellence of our community and our schools. So thank you very much for all that you do, and we appreciate everything.
Plan Commission Meeting, May 16th at 6:30 PM. Redevelopment Commission Meeting, May 23rd at 6:15 PM. Town Council Meeting, May 23rd at 6:30 PM. Town, no, wait, no. Juneteenth Freedom, Freedom Fest, June, June 7th, 17th from 12 to 5 PM at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Fireworks will be at Maryville High School on, on July 3rd. Fourth of July party, party July is going to be at July 4th at 11:30 AM, starting at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, going south. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.